We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, tonight, all members are present. We'll start with the agenda, any changes, additions to the agenda, any members? There was a question if items two through five, they're all final subdivision flats in the local staff report, you all recommend approval, I've completed everything, those are final subdivision flats for children's open woods, coast crossing, coast crossing two, some parts, if they have, if you would love being voted on at once, there's one call, we'll get to them. All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. You have a second? Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the agenda. Approval of the meeting minutes from October eleventh, two thousand twenty meeting, any questions on those? I have one question regarding the public hearing to identify who filed up the public hearing in the comments, it references them but not by that.
Okay.
We'll do that. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the minute? If not though, you have a motion?
Motion.
A motion, Mr. Murphy, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, to the individual review of the agenda items, item one is a listed public hearing, I don't know if there was a sign in sheet of this, but you might want to speak on this, we'll open it up. Settlers Ridge, RCB Properties, requests recommendations to Boardman Alderman for street acceptance of Settlers Ridge subdivision. This land commission makes an advisory role to the Boardman Alderman, who has to formally accept the street, would anybody be wanting to speak on regarding this? All right, see?
Uh, yeah, this one's one of our older established neighborhoods, it still had a few, uh, things that the developer needed to do, we had a bond in place on it, uh, it had been extended about two years, two, three years, I think, so finally our public services director, you know, we're trying to get him out from under these bonds, and so he reached out to the developer, he took care of the work, and, uh, some curb repair, some road repair, and so, uh, he's satisfied that we're ready to accept this subdivision.
That project's been complete for years. Any questions or comments regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, uh, the buffer around that subdivision, is that completed? Yeah, everything, everything's complete.
All right, any more questions here? If not, we have a motion?
Make a motion.
See, uh, motion second?
Second.
Motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, we talked earlier about items two, three, four, five, these are all final subdivision flats for phase projects, uh, these are all project under construction, built at Oakwood Phase Five, coast crossing Phase One B, coast crossing Phase Two, and the parts Phase Four, we can leave their final subdivision flats, and the staff report, there were no remaining items, they were most, uh, they completed all the items left, um, so if we want to begin, we're gonna have a discussion on any of these items before we make a vote. Do you have any claims or any of the parts?
Uh, guys, four, um, five are reasonable, but they separated them, uh, like three A, three B, four A, four B, so, uh...
There's still some more.
Yeah, there's still a few more. None increasing homes, though.
I know that, yeah. These are already zoned, master plan properties, it's staying here.
No.
This car, the item four, coast crossing, minimum six, five lots, and you're...
It should be fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay.
Yeah, Jimmy was right.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any comments or questions, any additional comments or questions on these items? If not, we have a motion?
Motion to approve items two through five.
We have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, uh, we'll motion pass, no, so thank you. Item number six, White House shop, DB White House LLC, request site plan approval, construction of a seventy-eight thousand square foot retail center, including a grocery and shopping space, this property goes the corner of Raymond Hurst Park, Parkway and Iowa Seventy-Six, owned by C.T. General Commercial, see this?
All right, this is a, uh, unnamed large grocery store, uh, site plan, um, has, has been viewed, and, uh, we've worked with T-Dot, uh, uh, gosh, several months now, uh, the developer has actually, has gone as far as getting the T-Deck approval, Corps of Engineer approval, and, and all of those, uh, state level approvals that they had, T-Deck was satisfied, T-Deck, T-Dot was satisfied with the, uh, the traffic study and, uh, the traffic, uh, situation that, uh, we all have looked at, um, if you'll notice on the, uh, site plan, you'll see Raymond Hurst coming northbound at that far entrance closer to the water tower, I know you guys can't see it, it's tiny, I'm sorry, uh, but there is a signal ized intersection, uh, at that, uh, the far, further closest to the water tower turning into the site, as you get further, uh, near the Dollar Tree entrance, uh, closer to the Dollar Tree behind there, uh, there's not a signal light, but you'll notice there is a turn lane, a third, added turn lane, turning, uh, uh, westbound on the Seventy-Six, uh, so, uh, the developers have, you know, worked with this, uh, and, you know, engineers, so I think we're satisfied with the site plan.
What is that road number thirty, the signal light one, thirty?
It's at the, uh, the back entrance, uh, near, closest to the water tower.
Right, what's it called, what's it?
Simmons Bank.
Okay, okay, yes.
Appears also there's a turn lane on Seventy-Six.
Yeah, there's a full turn lane on the Seventy-Six also. Because I have three, uh, outbuildings as well, uh, you can kind of see the, uh, building A, building B, and building C, uh, you can't see them on that small, uh, to your bottom left, if you're looking at the screen, but, uh, those will all be commercial of some sort, nothing identified.
Looks like a green white connection also, off the back.
Yeah.
That was the quest that we had of the developer, and, you know, we're working with them on the traffic issues, I think, she just explained a lot of them, and, uh, so we're working at, you know, our road impact fees, though, that can help offset their costs in that regard, we're looking at possibly industrial development, um, some bonding there for pilot possibly or tip, so we're still working with, uh, some on that too. So you will have, on Raymond Hurst at Seventy-Six, you'll have two dedicated lefts, and then a through, and a right, so it'll be a wide one there. Yes, that's, that's, that was important, if they thought, they're gonna use a shared access drive off Royal Riley, because now that was approved by the state years ago to be a shared access into that property, so we didn't, we didn't feel that there was any additional needed turn lanes or anything like that, probably just showing that. Comments or questions? Looks like a big nice building for a save a lot.
Or all the other programs? Ready for the next?
Oh, we, oh, just wait, anybody have any comments or questions on it? It will be a unique looking commercial building for that size and material.
We don't have a, um, two-story, uh, whether there'll be a eatery upstairs where you can, uh, kind of overlook balcony on the second floor, uh, as well, so it'll have some, there's a similar save a lot in, uh, another part of the, the, this region that it's kind of gonna mimic, uh, kind of a lone hall.
Yeah. Takes this question, it shows that office, the, the buildings at front, Raymond Hurst, like if this gets approved, and maybe it's something not like an office, maybe something like another shop, would that be a problem, you feel like, is it listed on the plan, or should say shops or retail company?
I think it'd be fine, I mean, I think the parking's sufficient to, to what, whatever may go there, I think the parking is the bigger issue to, you know, whatever square footage dictates, I think it'll be, be fine.
And the zoning, I think, keeping the zoning, C two is important.
Yeah, so C two, yeah. Motion to approve item six.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Item seven, give a public hearing, uh, this is Core Five Industrial Partners, request recommendations to Boardman Alderman to rezone thirty-seven acres from C two General Commercial to Light Industrial, it's possibly, is located at Love's Land, Union Road.
Chairman, uh, I can only clarify, uh, this would only be rezoned at twenty-one acres of this thirty-seven acre parcel.
Okay.
Uh, this would be a conditional approval, uh, based on the, the owner getting it, re-subdivided before the second reading of, uh, that Boardman Alderman, uh, you can remember this parcel was zoned I one at one time, uh, and the owner had it, uh, previous owner had it zoned back to C two, and so, just a portion would be I one, the remainder would be C two.
Just to, just to clarify, it's such a large parcel, it wouldn't require a subdivision, it just would need a new legal description.
Right, yeah, good point.
Uh, we have several people signed up for item seven, we'll make sure, um, I don't know, wanna talk to, Mr. Kelly was first, uh, I think he signed up for...
I had my side, you know, and I need to move down.
Okay, okay, Lisa Ward?
Yeah.
All right, did you want to speak on this items?
Uh, yes, with permission, Mr. Chairman, my name's John Michael, I'm legally represented by Core Five Development.
Okay.
I think my colleague Nicole Williams, Ms. Ward from Core Five, and I've all signed in, with your permission, I'll go ahead and start that presentation.
Okay.
Though it may be, again, my name's John Michael, the Thompson Burton Ball from the Nashville, we represent Core Five and City Development, just from the request, as Mr. Clark and Ms. Webb helpfully explain, this is, of course, just a request to rezone a portion of that thirty-seven acre parcel, approximately twenty-one acres, that our client is under contract to purchase and hope to build out if in fact we're successful with the severance to rezone, the idea is to leave the remaining portion of that property because the current owner wants to keep it under its current C two zoning, whereas we're seeking to be rezoning to I one for this current development project, uh, the idea is to build out some, what is basically spec, industrial warehousing type, uh, distribution warehousing type stuff, actually, or type of product, as you see here, some renderings from other projects that C five has done of a perhaps similar nature in other places, this is a group that does this kind of work all the time, they're not just a fly-by-night operation, this is their core concept, the core work they do at Core Five Development, so we know that we're gonna deliver you a high-quality project, as long as we can get the zoning that's needed, as Ms. Webb clarified, we will be filing, we are already preparing, and we'll be filing the documents that will effectively subdivide, uh, personal state law, under Title thirteen, of course, we're able to do it with that size of a lot, uh, if it's a smaller lot, it's a much more ball process when it comes back to you, but instead, if in fact we're approved conditionally for the rezoning, we wouldn't be back until Boma had voted on the matter, and if approving the rezoning, we would, of course, have to come back to you for the final site plan approval a little later today as well, what we wanted to point out today, though, is that the current process, uh, that we're working through is, for us, the, the benefit of a lot of cooperation from city staff, we've had a chance to talk to Mr. Parker, great link, our team, Ms. Ward's team, throughout the entire process, we appreciate Ms. Ward, uh, Ms. Webb creating clarification for us as well along the way, um, ultimately, we're asking for your approval on this, for recommendation of approval to Boma, we believe that the product that we put forth will be exemplary, but more importantly, we think it actually lines up neatly with the legal requirements under the city's plan and the requirements to be met for rezoning, uh, process in this case, very neatly, so with that, I'll hand it off to my teammate, uh, Nicole Williams, to explain, probably check all the boxes of the zoning guidelines.
Hi, Nicole Williams, uh, with Thompson Jordan, uh, so, per the city's comprehensive plan, this is in the innovation character area, and as I'm sure you all know, that character area is specifically designed to enhance and promote, um, business interests, office, and industrial activities within the city, and I one is one of the four, um, appropriate zoning designations under the innovation character area, so, um, in addition to that, not only is it included in the appropriate zoning designation, um, it's also called out in the comprehensive plan as being among the most appropriate uses, that light industrial use, um, the comprehensive plan notes that light industrial, limited manufacturing, and research-type uses are the most appropriate to, to achieve the vision of the innovation character area, so, given the, um, conformity with both the letter and the spirit of the comprehensive plan, um, given the fact that a lot of these other surrounding parcels are already zoned I one, um, have some C two, um, to the north, but many of the parcels around this parcel are already zoned I one, light industrial, um, we do feel that this fits very neatly into the comprehensive plan and the city's vision for that area, um, and future development in that area, and so we would ask that you, um, grant this conditional approval, and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Ward from Core Five to talk more about Core Five, the type of work that they do, and, um, and the products that this will be, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'm Lisa Ward with Core Five Industrial Partners and Senior Vice President of the company, um, and I oversee our capital deployment and development throughout the South East during the United States, um, Core Five stands for, um, it's basically our Core Five business headquarters, which are all focused on integrity and doing what we say we're gonna do, um, our sole focus as a national commercial real estate development firm is Class A light industrial buildings, that's our sole focus, so this is what we do day in and day out, um, what we have proposed here is a three-hundred-thousand-square-foot rear road building, there'll be various studies late evening, in your packages that I presented, um, you'll see a couple of photos of similar sized buildings that we have completed in other markets, um, we're currently active in Atlanta, Minnesota, and Nashville, um, in Nashville, we're currently working on a nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-square-foot building that we're completing in the city of Lebanon, um, it will, um, we started it as a spec development, and prior to the foundations being complete, we leased it to Walmart, uh, which will end up creating a roughly a hundred-and-seventy-five-million-dollar tax base for the city and the Gilbert County, and create about eight-hundred new jobs for the community, um, in addition to that, it's actually very high, um, robotics are being used in, in the facility, and it's becoming more of a prototype for Walmart, so for this, um, the subject building that we're proposing here, three-hundred-thousand square feet, a little bit different than what we're just doing for Walmart, but, um, this building would be, would accommodate up to four tenants, ranging from roughly seventy-five-thousand square feet to the entire building, again, aesthetically pleasing, like the photos that were presented along the front, and then there'll be dock along the back, um, great access right over to sixty-five, less than roughly half a mile from sixty-five, so we feel like this is an ideal location, uh, for this type product, and, uh, we would appreciate your support in, uh, rezoning this portion of the site to I one.
See, if you have anything, it shows the port, the twenty-one acre portion of the thirty-seven, is that one diagram, I'll show that?
Yeah.
The white blue would remain C two in the darker.
Correct.
There was only one person that I've come, uh, signed up to speak, but anybody else have any comments for, move on with the public hearing?
I have a question, if, if, uh, as a percentage, do you know what percentage of your buildings that you build, uh, end up being leased out before they're finished?
In the current cycle, um, almost a hundred percent of our buildings are leased out prior to completion, um, right now, the vacancy rate in metropolitan area of Nashville is only two-point-four percent, so it's very low, it's historically low, so, uh, the supply is not keeping up with the demand for this type product, so, we feel like we'll have substantial leasing before completing the building.
I bet you will, I mean, yep, thank you.
This is a recommendation to the Boardman Alderman to rezone a portion of the thirty-seven acres to I one Light Industrial. Any additional questions or comments? All right, we have any motions?
Don't move.
Any motions approved, we have a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, another public hearing, Cornfield Properties, requests recommendations to the Boardman Alderman to rezone forty-eight-point-twenty-four acres from R twenty load into residential, residential to I one Light Industrial, which possibly is located on Union Road, I don't know, Mr. Kelly, time to speak on this, uh, please go ahead and, and you come to the proposing the statement.
Read it, read it back, oh, not necessarily the Cornfield Properties, the next to read, so, we won't try, uh, I have no objection to people settling their lane, and that's what they voted for, I do have a concern about the, the joint, the property owners and the traffic, uh, Union Road is already maxed out, uh, we're getting there, it's running over there, but, uh, it's all mostly running over there, out there, and I'd just like to know how you're gonna handle the traffic, you know, that's my, just my biggest concern, and, uh, is it gonna be roads built, uh, will they be built prior to the development, is, you know, traffic from building, trucks and stuff, it's gonna be coming and going in there, will they be on Union Road, or will they be on some other road, uh, that's just my concern, it's just what it's gonna do to the rest of us that still live there, that's been there a long time.
Anyone else sign up to speak, any more questions, or any, anybody wanna speak on this?
How far is that, how far is that from the end of Union Road? I mean, how far will the traffic have to travel to get off Union Road from this property? Closest?
That, that was crossing the interstate, so...
Yeah, um, it would, the, the farthest, uh, property to the, the southern tip would have that access on Union.
So down the mountain, by the traffic?
Yeah.
Almost the mountain.
Yeah, what, if you don't mind, uh, Adam, if I speak on this, this, this is a area that we've been working on with Robertson County Economic Development, TVA Engineering Firm, in, in the city of White House, putting together two-hundred-acre area for, for industrial development, light manufacturing, so, uh, we've done a lot of already environmental phase ones been done, uh, we're mediating on it, there are on the site that had to be mediated, and so, what you're seeing these next several ones that are gonna come forward are the properties that, the four property owners that are involved, that we have to, if we're gonna make this right, we have to get the zoning right, so we can do this, we've had, um, numerous, I didn't, we've had several, uh, companies come to us and look at the property, uh, so we, we know that there's a lot of interest in that area, and it's kind of ties in with the, the purple zone that you have showing up there before, if you don't mind showing that as a whole group, as you can see, we were just talking about the west side of the interstate, this is on the east side, we're, yeah, we're kick, we're creating a, a way to get into the property into different accesses, you got, you got Hester comes around, and, uh, it takes care of the mill, well, it's no longer the millwork, it's, it's a millwork company, and then you've got, uh, Advanx is there, we have a, and now, we're, we're looking at Sage Road, where Cardinal comes together there, having another road going into the parcels that will feed, uh, a couple more, uh, industries in there, eventually to connect to Union Road and Union Road, so we wanna have various ways to come in, go from this industrial area, rather than what we've done in the past, where we have, where we had industrial drive that you had to drive in, and you could only get to those properties back there, and you had to come back out that way, uh, so we, we still only have one access in the other one, this one, we want to have multiple access points, so there, so that not one certain road takes all the heat from, from any trucks that are going in, plus the type of businesses we're trying to put in there have, we're trying to get limited, uh, trucks in there, and another thing we're trying to do is have limited water, because we, we're limited in how much water we have available in that particular purple zone, so we're wanting to try to get companies that have low water usage, we have sewer, we have power, um, and, and our natural gas is a little bit, is a little bit weak in that area too, but that's what we're trying to do, so we're trying to do the best we can bring in the right type of industry, that's gonna bring jobs, good paying jobs, like Advanx, high-skill jobs, and, and that's what we're trying to do in that area, so...
I have a question, do you know how far, up the Hester Drive, when you, when you go down Hester Drive to the property that used to be Love's Mill Works, with, with all these properties when they're put together, how, how close is that road to these properties? Do you know how far it would have to be extended?
Well, we're, we're, we already got a grant with, with, uh, T-Dot, it's a state industrial access grant that's taking us to at least up to Advanx, now, there is a, there's a, a creek line along there, uh, that would have to be overcome to get the road extended, we looked at that as a possibility, but we have another company that's looking at us already, and you're gonna be getting that, you know, when that's coming forward?
Next month.
December?
Next month.
Next month, you'll be seeing another, another product that'll be coming forward, they, they've designed it not to use that Hester Drive, so that would limit it to just those two factors, so I think that takes care of those, which, again, uh, this company's one that we're looking at building Sage Road into the property, to them to help us with that end of it, if that's what they wanna do, they're gonna have to help us build the road, or build the road.
And, and possibly someday, with, I, I think with this whole area, and, and the kind of development that we're gonna have in there, I, I'm hoping we'll see another exit off the interstate.
Yeah, well, that's, that's been brought up, it's a challenge for us, Adam, he's been very, very much involved, and I have for the last eleven years, it's in, you know, there, it's, you know, the closest we could probably put an, an, an exit on there would be New Hall Road, that would probably have a thirty-million-dollar price tag to it, you know, you'd need federal state money, it could be more than that, um, but anyways, that would be a, a future possibly, the, uh, we, Union would not be the property, it's too close to the other one, they won't let that happen, but I think, you know, long-term, Union Road is gonna have to be improved, like Mr. Kelly says, it, it's just gonna have to be from, from Seventy-Six all the way up to this site, and we'll have to be in our sites to get that improved, too, so that, that's something that's gonna have to happen.
But we have no hard date on any of that stuff, Phil?
As far as when these things could be improved, no, we don't have a hard date on any of that, no, no, we're just trying to get what we can out of the companies that are trying to get in there, and, and us, so...
Well, until, until we got the appropriate zoning for this, and get this in, it, it's gonna be hard to move forward with it, and not what we're gonna have.
Right, and there's, once we get it under, and there's certain things we're still trying to, Margot's done a great job of trying to bring in extra grant money from the state to help continue with that development, and from TVA, to help get some funds, to help continue to bring utilities into there, in the road, so we got some work yet to do on it, um, but, you're right, these are the things that we have to kind of get in line, get the, get the zoning squared away, there was an annexation of the Milton property, which I believe that one came last month, that's gonna be going before the board, so that's something, we're, we're, we're getting all this stuff set up, it's gonna make it easier for the companies that are trying to, to locate here, they're gonna say, oh, you got the zoning already, you've already done your environmental, you've already mitigated any, any water hazards that we've had, and, and that's what they're looking at, so...
You don't get a lot of interest to get that zoning first, because that's when the interest comes in, because what you get, they don't go through all that rezoning process.
That's correct, yes.
If, 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 don't why you, Union Road, who's gonna be responsible for buying the right way and the water?
That's gonna have to Union Road, all of the city?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, no, I don't thi, I, I have to look at the whole thing, I'm not sure if there might be parts of it or not, I don't know, certain, certain parts of it are, but, I mean, that's the thing, we have, we haven't even got into that yet on Union Road, I've got, I've got a whole backlog of traffic, road projects that I'm working on, that one is, is, is not moved up yet, because we haven't got the interest there, other areas, we already have interest, so I've gotta get some things improved on some other areas, which you all know about, I've talked about the chamber, I've presented it online, there's, there's a number of, of road projects that we have in, in different stages of, you know, development, whether we're trying to obtain right of way, or we're trying to get utilities relocated, uh, trying to get preliminary designs, and it, it, it takes a lot, you know, when it comes to these roads, and we're moving forward as, as, as fast as we can, with a little bit of money we get from the state, that'll, so it'll be fast.
Any kind of future right of way? Any kind of future right of way acquisition would be, the city would have to produce grants, but it would be through a government agency would take?
Absolutely, yes, yeah, we, we would have to seek those right of ways, yes.
And just as a small minute, uh, I think it was our B part, they, they were approved and they were approved on condition of their site by their traffic study. And so there's still be to be, to be determined for what they have to do, because their traffic study really wasn't sufficient, so they have to resubmit. And so there, there'll, there'll likely be some widening on portions of Union Road. Uh, there's a couple, some, some activity in that area just on the opposite side of sixty five from this that, uh, will likely, uh, receive some, some private developer, uh, you know, widen in, in that area. So, uh, as, as we said, as the developers come, uh, there will be things that they, uh, have to bring to the table in that area as well.
And that's when we could have more control over that too, have more say so in that too.
That site plan approved, yeah, traffic study, site plan approved, so all be required to do with traffic study.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of drainage improvement, what they require on Union Road.
Yeah.
Road, not much whatsoever.
So Phil, um.
For the, for the record, I did get a phone call, and for the life of me, she called me, I think we talked Thursday night, about seven o'clock. She lives across from there, and she, she had the exact same comments that Mr. Kelly, her name was, that's, and I, I'll get the name and put it in a minute. She wanted, she, she's disabled, and she wanted it to be, uh, reflected in public record that she called.
Well, that's on Union Road concern, I did, is it?
It was, yeah, so.
It is, it's gonna be a difficult one.
I, I was just gonna say that, like so many situations in our communities, they're gonna get better, but they're probably gonna get worse before they get better because of time and money. That's just fact.
You know, Phil? Sorry. All right, Mike Powers, where we actually live on Union Road as well, and so I, I've also reflected Mr. Kelly's concern also. Uh, and, um.
Can you say your name?
Mike Powers, P O W E R S. Thank you. Uh, yeah, and there's actually a good number of us that kind of live on that south side of Union Road, I just found out, only because we happened to drive by the land a couple of days ago. Uh, so this is a little bit of news really to all of us, and I apologize, I didn't believe in that, that whole plan until this evening. And I, I guess maybe because it came out during COVID, I'm like, this is a long way.
It was prior to COVID, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, you know, with, every time the interstate closes, I do, I'm sort of like, I've got lots of questions, uh, because Union Road becomes the Google reroute, uh, for every time the interstate closes, and I'm sure y'all are really aware of how often that happens. Uh, and so I would say that more than just a few people that are really concerned on the south side of Union Road. We'll make sure that folks know about the, where things are going here, so, thank y'all very much.
Uh, these islands eight through ten are recommendations to the board mayor and all, and maybe we'll make, we'll then make the final decision on these islands. We do have questions, not traffic, this definitely sounds familiar. See, you remember when the comprehensive plan?
Twenty nineteen, so it was, uh, really long.
It was long, it was a long process, I mean, I'm about to finish it up. All right, so I don't have any more questions from the board members, or we have any motions?
Motion for a positive recommendation on item eight to the board, mayor and all.
We have a motion to approve, uh, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got one that's saying, Mr. Hudson? All right, item number nine, I have public hearing on this, also this is the same area, but a different property. Jerry Eaton requests recommendations to the board mayor and all to rezone thirty six acres from R twenty low density to I one. This property is located at the corner of Melton and Union Road. No one signed up to speak on this, we have to, since they're public hearings, it's not just an individual. Uh, it's the same comments, it's property south of that, uh, anyone else have a speak?
I said, oh, I had to say, um, you know, all of a sudden.
I guess the question on this, you're, you're turning the corner, what about Milton Road, is there, is the goal for all the access to come off? Is that okay?
Yes, we, we've looked at, um, a site plan already for that area, a couple of different configurations, uh, from a, uh, South Korean company manufacturing facility. So, um, yeah, we don't plan on using Milton at all. Matter of fact, uh, Paul has requested that ten acres that, of, of their property that's up next to the Milton Road is, is not, is been taken out of the annexation process. So we go back ten acres off of that, so.
Will you repeat that, I didn't hear what you said.
Uh, if you look at lot fifty nine, I think it is, we removed, uh, the, the ten acres that, I guess, if you go back ten acres from where Milton Road is, that has been removed from the annexation, so the back portion of that property is gonna be what's annexed into the city. So the Milton Road frontage is not.
Okay. So probably a couple hundred feet off Milton Road always, did that clarify it, Nicky?
Yeah, I just didn't hear you.
Okay, all right.
But you're talking about the one that was a pretty blast, maybe the one with the Milton property that had the connect, get it taken out, okay? But not this one.
Not this one, but again, we, we don't see that as a, a necessary need to have an access point on that, we wouldn't need that there.
Okay, so it would not be this property looking?
No.
Any other questions on this item, I don't know what kind of discuss either as a whole, does, any other questions on this before we make a motion or? All right, so item nine, uh, this is a recommendation to the board mayor and all to rezone thirty six acres to I one light industrial, do we have a motion?
Motion for a positive recommendation to the board of mayor and all for item nine.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, item number ten, again, public hearing, I'll show the property, this is a Hus- Hudson Lynn Picky property. Request recommendation to the board mayor and all to rezone fifty nine point six acres from R twenty low density residential to I one light industrial. This is the furthest north property of the three, uh, adjacent to I sixty five, but. Again, public hearing, um, planning issues, does anybody wanna speak particularly on this property? All right, any questions on this? I remember when this one, uh, when they auctioned it all for Italy, the five acre tract, that's been fifteen years ago.
Just figured, just figured that's the man.
Yeah.
Um, it's twenty years ago.
So this is the one that's got the quarry on the property, south of, as you said, the, the project Jerry was talking about on the sage end. Any questions on this one from the planning commission or emotions? This is, again, a recommendation to the board mayor and all to rezone fifty nine acres to I one light industrial. Have a motion?
I made a motion, made a, one of this being some request.
All right, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second, uh, to approve, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, abstention, Mr. Hudson, item ten, uh, to the board mayor and all. Item number eleven was deferred from the October planning commission, this is the Burris Ridge, uh, project. It's a preliminary plot approval for six hundred and fifty three lot, current property zoning is R twenty low density residential. Property is located on New Hall Road, I sixty five, and North Smith Road. Uh, the proposal is for, I'm gonna write, alternative layout cluster type development, uh, for the R twenty zoning, the current zoning. There were some questions last month about traffic and, uh, the traffic study, please.
Um, uh, one of the questions that, uh, the commissioners had were, you guys asked, uh, what the county, what type of county coordination, and what type of feedback we got from the county. Um, the county, um, they received the traffic study, and, um, first of all, they, they were in agree, agreement with the, uh, Burris Ridge proposed, uh, improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, basically, you know, we were kinda, I would say, same paper, you know, they just let us know that, uh, they were okay with what, uh, Burris Ridge was gonna propose. Uh, to, to be more specific, um, uh, there was no, uh, signal identification at, uh, New Hall and seventy six, uh, in, in this discussion that they had with the county, I know that's kind of elephant in the room, uh, to discuss, but, uh, so I would kind of pass it, path towards or.
Now, Jake, I know, uh, you weren't, you weren't able to be with last month, I mean, you, any thoughts on the traffic study, I'm sure you had to go through this one.
Um, yeah, a lot of thought on the traffic. And, uh, I mean, the, the, the breadth of it, uh, I think is, is, is a good look at what conditions we have there now and the impact from, from this development. We went to the nearest, you know, stop control intersections with that, so you, you had the three major ones, one in the south, two in the north, and looked at all those, and, um, yeah, there, there are some issues that are there now, and the issues are gonna, um, increase, not just because of this property, but, uh, the growth that, that we've got here plus this project. So, yeah, there, there are some known issues that, uh, that we looked at, and it's nothing new, I guess I'll say that. We've, we've, we've had a bunch of these projects and, and issues that the traffic has, and how we're gonna deal with it, so. Their, their traffic study sort of lays out what our conditions are now and what needs to be done. So I can answer any other specific questions.
What's, what's the plan? You just think things need to be done, we got a plan?
Do I?
Yeah.
I do not.
Okay.
Well, I, I know last, last month we had an executive session, uh, for legal.
Yes, and, um, I think that, you know, we need to, to do that again this month as well. So I think unless you're not to talk before that, I think we should do that now.
Because that was our big question.
I think, you know, we need a motion to do that.
Make a motion, let's, let's make a session.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Let's see, the time is seven forty, what do you think, about ten minutes?
I mean, surely, yeah.
Yeah, I know I'm over.
You're not over, Nick.
No, I'm not. Yeah.
You were saying that the structure brought you, uh, over. Yeah, yeah, that's what they're doing, that's right. So that should be, uh, their, their, uh, uh, they told me that they contract, you know, the standards are. Yeah, so, yeah, so essentially that contract, we have that done with what you see. Just got the contractors to create today, and those guys knew that they're gonna happen, so they're only gonna be on Friday or Saturday. Uh, so we all, you should see, uh, actually, uh, begin, uh, get a little more, uh, soon for that, because they've got a little bit of work to do. See, for, uh, early intersection and then, uh, so even though they have six or eight in their contract, they're getting weathered for me. Their, their timing. That's what they're doing right now. Well, it's a three-way stop, but, but before Seagerbrook, there's that road before that is, just around the curve. And then those houses got built right there on the Seagerbrook side, right? So this road still got the curvature that meant for this to be the main direction. Well, with the subdivision, not just the one here, but the bigger, it's back there. Yeah, and that corner side right here, now they're opening up and all that, uh, so they're changing this. Yeah, so they're changing this to set a three-way stop, their current end, their this road, like they're essentially going to fix. This, this, uh, make it a one-way stop here. And this try, this is gonna be fixed so that this is the main, uh, drive, meaning, uh, no stops on this, and that's right. But, but the bare main, yeah, that, the road's like this, so they're already traveling. A bunch of cars, you know, they have a correct, right? Great, so after fixing that, and, and we're gonna, maybe that's might get that way stopping that road. So that, that should be done in thirty days, thirty, well, contracts, they'll be done by name for sure, they fully meet.
All right, we will show, uh, all members are back, everybody's back. The time is seven fifty-one. Think we're gonna start, uh, the rest of the agenda, I think Mr. Herman has a, a question, Dr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair D. A little outside than what I normally do with planning commissions, but this is gonna require this. Uh, the recommendations in the traffic study for various road and intersection improvements would definitely benefit the flow of traffic in and around the area of the proposed subdivision. Safety of the motoring public would improve. Because of the large size of this proposed subdivision, traffic impact areas enlarge. Here, this area enlargement impacts roads located in multiple jurisdictions, which include the state, counties of Robertson, and some are in the city of White House. Every parcel of land in the enlarged area contributes in some way to the traffic volume we see increasing on the roads in this area. It was only a couple of decades ago, that State Route seventy-six was only a two-lane road with one flashing light at the intersection of State Route seventy-six and US thirty-one W. As business along that corridor grew, traffic improvements have been made. No one business or property owner was responsible for all the many changes that have occurred over these past twenty years. These changes have occurred with private investment, city expenditures, and state and federal dollars. Now we are seeing growth on the west side of Interstate sixty-five. And as growth occurs, uh, traffic improvements will continue to be made by all of the entities with jurisdiction over these roads. Working with landowners within the corridor and state partners, State Route seventy-six has been widened from Hester Drive to Love's Lane. We have built new roads such as Love's Lane and Harper's Way. We have built an extension onto DC Court to create a new industrial park access into Brinkley Industrial Park. And we have added a turn lane on Pleasant Grove Road that intersects with State Route seventy-six. We were able to get into the State Improve Act legislation to widen State Route seventy-six corridor and Interstate sixty-five to New Hall Road, which should occur sometime in the near future, we hope. With that said, although city staff would like to have all the improvements recommended by the traffic study completed immediately, we understand the complexities, jurisdictional authority, and quite frankly, the cost it would take to build on all these improvements. We do not believe we can require the developers to complete all the traffic study's recommended improvements without opening the city up to potential litigation that could result in significant cost to the city. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission approve the subdivision as by right zoning, and that it be stipulated that the developer be, be required to make the recommended traffic improvements the traffic study says should be made by the developer, which include signalized intersection at Union Road and US Highway seventy-six. Extend a hundred-foot eastbound and northbound left turn lane on New Hall Road at US thirty-one W to include a hundred seventy-five feet of storage and a hundred-foot taper. Construct side access A at New Hall Road to accommodate full access, left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out movements. Control side access A with one stop sign, provide one outbound lane. Construct side access B at New Hall Road to accommodate full access, left-in, left-out, right-in, and right-out movements. Control side access B with one stop sign, provide one outbound lane. Construct side access C at New Hall Road to accommodate full access, left-in, left-out, right-in, and right-out movements. Control side access C with one stop sign, provide one outbound lane. Uh, construct ex, uh, side access D with three legs to join with Swift Road. Each new leg shall accommodate full access movements, left-in, left-out, right-in, right-out movements, and provide one outbound lane. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
All right, do we have, uh, an applicant here to represent while we open up the discussion?
I'll go. Wendy, you can listen, uh, thank you for, um, having us back before you this evening, and thank you for your statement. And we are available for your questions.
Have a question, okay, a couple of them. The light that we're talking about at Union Road and, um, um, directionally challenged, so, Union Road, that before after New Hall coming from Springfield on seventy-six, after, okay. And will the Union Road light take some of the burden off of New Hall Road at seventy-six? I mean, I would let a directionally challenged person go.
All right, so Mike Donovan with CISO is here, um, our traffic engineer, we did have him come in a couple of times, but we did not find him, uh, this evening, so Mike is here to deal with that.
Yeah, according to the traffic study, a lot of the traffic will be coming up to that intersection, to that red light, from the development.
Well, instead of New Hall, they'll come to the Union Road, they'll take some of that burden. Um, and then when does the light come into play? I mean, when do you actually put that improvement, is that one of the first ones you put in, or how does that?
I'm not sure when that was recommended, at what phase of the development.
So the similar with, with Union Road, the majority, I guess the traffic will come in off of sixty-five, is what they're saying. That's, I guess that's the primary access point.
It was the majority of the traffic coming in on sixty-five, there's also some traffic coming in off thirty-one, or, um?
The thing about the kids coming out to go to school, because their, their schools typically are off seventy-six, and they're gonna be coming, going to Heritage Drive.
Yes, and they would be going toward Heritage.
And that's my, my chief problem.
And looking at your conclusion, it says it's the twenty twenty-five bill scenario?
Okay.
In the traffic.
What does that mean?
You wanna explain the bill scenario, no bill, the bill scenario?
Twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five? Basically, twenty twenty-five would be in, I guess, in Phase Three. It kinda depends on your predictions. Phase Two, Phase Two development.
So how many homes would we have in before we start with the traffic light in? Phase one has how many homes?
One fifty, one fifty-two, somewhere around there, one fifty-two.
Phase.
Phase one.
Phase two's not fully designed yet.
Right.
So we just work with, and through the plan approval process, uh, to get there for a traffic study.
It's troubling with this, I'm trying to ease my mind a little bit, so.
I thought I remembered our last meeting, we had a traffic signal on thirty-one also.
Yeah, I thought that too.
Was that, where did that go? You said about New Hall on thirty-one, or Union on thirty-one?
I thought it was New Hall on thirty-one, it was.
Mostly two.
So the only one that's warranted from our development is the one at seventy-six.
But then like last, last week you were two.
I'm sorry?
Last week you were gonna do two. Huh?
Nothing, nothing's changed with this. I believe that was one that was existing condition, um, but let me look through here.
That's correct, I can tell you that, that's exactly what it is. It shows that, they showed as being others should, should get that done now, that it's already a situation that needs a traffic. Like we've not had any traffic studies done to that particular intersection, but that's what they determined, so yes.
Because we talked about the school too.
We're gonna ask about, a property owner about.
Right, right. So it's something that, you know, the city, again, will have to probably look at adding that to their list of things. But we're still requiring them to do what their traffic report requires them to do. We have to have them do something. And so that is what their traffic report says that they should do, and they should do that. That means they have to put turn lanes in on New Hall Road, uh, right up at thirty-one W, they have to do that, which isn't currently there. That will be helpful to have turn lanes there, so.
So there is a, Dolly has a question about the timing of the, per the traffic study, the improvement they're proposing.
Well, that's the thing, the answer, about, of Phase Two, which is not quite been designed, we're gonna have a hundred-foot house there. Get the phase before we actually apply.
Any other questions?
I think just, just recap, did Robertson County agree with the traffic, the highway department agreed with the traffic study?
Robertson County, yeah.
Do they have any more comments about New Hall, this property, is that?
Currently, uh, currently they hired a, a consultant, traffic consultant, uh, to address, I mean, because they're planning this right now. So, uh, just for their sake, and they, and you can maybe speak to the traffic.
Yeah, I actually, uh, spoke with him today, and, and discussion about this came up. My understanding is they, they hired a consultant to help them with review of the, the traffic study and responded. And, um, what he stated was they just gave that response back to the developers today.
Okay.
But, uh, he summarized it as, as those were the traffic engineers' thoughts, considerations. But I guess as a, a developer and county in this process, do not have a, a resolution on what the final requirement will be for the, um, traffic improvements because of their project.
If they could still require, then.
They can, yes, but they, they just don't have a definitive answer yet of what that's gonna be.
My thing about this is you're saying that, that this road is not really in the purview of the city. I mean, New Hall is where we are, seventy-six.
Some of it is, some of it isn't.
At seventy-six, New Hall?
Well, well, I mean, it, it, there are multiple sections in this, in the traffic study that, some are in the city jurisdiction and some are in county.
Right, but this part that we're talking about right now, that is a section, that part of it is?
It's outside the city.
Which, which one?
It's New Hall at seventy-six, it's outside the city limit?
Yes.
So we can, we don't have a lot to say, the state has the say, and the county has the say.
I think that's correct, yes, they have the jurisdiction on that.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
I mean, is the timing of phase, the timing of the permit, it sounds like, you know, look at their study and think about where majority of people are gonna come, up off sixty-five. The Union Road interchange will be a big deal. Is it something, the timing of that? It sounds like it's something they're, they're proposing to do, but Dolly, is that, I don't know, something you brought up? When, you know, a third of the, a quarter of the development would, would basically be in before that would be put in?
Right, so we're gonna have, what, how many cars on the road coming out, and there won't be a traffic light there. Um, I mean, we already got the problem with selling thing of New Hall in seventy-six, which seems to be the big, uh, something. Um, but, um, if we don't have the light at Union Road earlier on, I think that there's, I don't know. I know it's not here to make me feel better, but it would make me feel better if we had something that would alleviate some of the pain of New Hall at seventy-six. That's, uh.
Um, just to go back to Robertson County real quick, um, I don't have the letter in front of me, but they, um, Neil Schaper is the traffic engineer that reviewed it, Craig Judy is the traffic engineer, that was assigned to it. And they noted that our methodology is sound, and they had, um, a handful of comments dealing with, uh, site distance and signage that the county had, looking at a right turn lane and at our north access point. Um, and then, uh, we will, we will work with them through the construction drawing process. And as we get moving forward, we will finalize all of those details with the county as we move forward. Um, I know that, you know, Phase Two doesn't sound comfortable to you because, um, you, you just didn't need for it at this time. However, um, with our methodology being sound, we are appropriately planning for it at Phase Two.
You don't feel better?
And think this is the.
Just the traffic fact from the report.
Does this preliminary master plan, or master plan they're proposing, it has like Phase One listed with a lot?
Yeah, I don't have it in, in, on this plan.
I think that's the key thing for us to know, exactly.
It's listed, uh, it's broken out, if you have a site plan.
All right.
Well, the first phase, see this, I believe, that will have access off of New Hall Road, they can probably talk to that specifically. But I don't think it'll be, it'll be a while before you see a Swift Road access, which would take you down the Union Road. So I don't see folks coming into the Phase One or even Phase Two possibly, uh, using, uh, that Union Road access. They're gonna be going, they're either gonna be heading towards thirty-one, or they're gonna be heading towards seventy-six, I do not know.
Yeah, distribution show, show they're heading, yeah.
Is that correct? I mean, when do you see Swift Road opening up, and what phase would that be?
So, this is Kevin Stern, we're not far enough along in engineering design, because we haven't gotten past this part.
Yeah, right.
To make the very significant investment, finalize engineering to get there. We spent significant dollars in here.
Yes, sir.
But we don't have all those details yet, so I can't commit that it's exactly a hundred and fifty homes.
That's right.
They've gone, or it's seventy-five, or there may be a sewer water issue, or some other issue that changes that. So we can't commit exactly how many homesets are gonna be there yet.
But I don't think it's, it's a matter of number of homes, but to me, it's a matter of where they're gonna act, where they're gonna exit and enter the subdivision. And I don't see, when do you, I mean, obviously, Swift Road, if, if we're talking about Union seventy-six, that access to Union seventy-six will probably only increase when we see Swift Road open up. The, the rest of it is gonna be on New Hall Road, and I, you know, and that's towards the back part of subdivision. So I don't anticipate Swift being your, your first priority entryway, is it?
No, it would be New Hall to start.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, the water does need to come over from Union and come across that way, so there will be improvements there.
But there's sewer already there, that Swift Road's where the sewer comes in. On the back side.
If, if that's all they wanna develop, and Union Road needs to be, uh, I mean, we need to get that traffic light up as soon as we can on Union Road at seventy-six would be great, but, uh.
Adam, you asked a question about the breakdown, but just FYI, so Phase One is one forty-seven, Phase Two, one forty-one, Phase Three, one forty-eight, and then it starts decreasing, uh, Phase Four is ninety-seven, Phase Five is seventy-three, and then Phase Four was completed out, I'm sorry, Phase Six was completed out of forty homes, uh, but, uh.
Where is, like, one?
Phase One. Phase One, Phase One's coming off New Hall, Phase Two would.
I see.
Any questions or comment?
As a board to, to be enticed to, uh, approve this, do we have any authority whatsoever to require that this very important traffic light be put up at a certain time before, after you get all your approvals? Uh, could you, or would you be willing to put your traffic light up to show us and the whole community that, yeah, we're trying, we're, we're not... You know, nobody knows for sure what's gonna happen, uh, or when it's gonna happen. If you put it up, it's happening.
I would love to tell you yes, however, there's other entities involved, the county and state, correct?
Right.
So.
T I'd be primary on, on the seventy-six Union, I don't think Robertson County would have much.
It'd just be T I, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
We would need to be permitted and all that, and I, I would love to tell you yes, we could do that, but we may not be able to.
I understand.
And just him, just FYI, uh, we're dealing with this on, uh, Tyree's. And just him, just FYI, uh, we're dealing with this on, uh, Tyree Springs as well, whenever you're going onto an intersection, uh, a T-Dot road, uh, they'll have to, before they make an approval, they'll have to see a full construction design of what they're going, they won't give a preliminary, uh, they won't even comment on it unless they got the full, uh, construction, you know, information.
Right.
The improvements on New Hall, the turn lane, was that tied to a certain phase for the study?
No, it wasn't. It was, it was all, everything was part of the new, no bill, uh, the, the, not no bill, but the twenty-twenty-five, uh, bill, traffic scenario.
Any comments, questions?
One good thing about this layout, as y'all remember the old one, it is similar to the layout, of course it doesn't have the golf course, but with the open face, the Central Creek area right to it, but the layout looks a lot like the original one, and that was six hundred and forty minutes, that was approved way back when, they set the sewer for it, um, that was.
I mean, it's approved at a different time with other roads, you've got no parks, with no legacy, I think, of that nature.
One last comment, if it helps, is, uh, since this is preliminary plan, and I mentioned we'll get our engineering done and all that during the construction drawing phase, we'll be back up for final plan, and we should have a lot more of those traffic signal timing questions answered by then, it's just not fully designed yet.
Thank you. I think one of the, the concerns is that, that, that may lock before that traffic signal gets put in. That was a smaller phase one, I think that would make a few questions. Cause it does make sense, your majority's gonna come in off that, but there, like you said, there is school traffic and, um. Do we have a motion, any stipulations, or?
Motion to approve, item eleven.
So we have a motion to approve, item eleven, this is a, um, preliminary plan approval for a six hundred fifty-three single-family lot, preliminary at the master plan for a, our twenty, custom type alternative layout.
Six forty-six.
I'm sorry, six forty-six, the end of six fifty-three. So we have a motion, we have a second?
Six fifty-three.
Six fifty-three, my math, my math is terrible. Rita, Rita always had it right.
We do have a motion, uh, to approve. We have a second? We have a second for discussion? Just no discussion on the motion?
Can I ask a question? No, this question is of the developers. This might be an inappropriate question, but it would, it'd help us to do whatever we need to do one way or the other. Uh, it is, from my understanding, that if you do, if you folks and you seem to have done everything that you're supposed to do to get approved, if we don't approve you, will you sue us?
Can I ask that question?
No, well.
Never mind.
People second that.
There are, there are established rights.
We can't hold that, we can't say what they're gonna do, or a judge will determine if it teaches. So we have any questions? Would you have a motion?
I second the motion.
I'm sorry?
I second the motion.
We got a motion to approve, second? All say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? I guess we're gonna do a show of hands to get that accurate.
Yeah, you need to get this one wrong.
Uh, approval, raise your hand. The one, three, and it's, so we got. And then denial? So denial, one, two, three, there.
Is it appropriate for me to vote on?
Yes, sir, you.
You're kinda.
We need to, it's three of three, yes.
I'll vote for it.
Motion, wait a second.
You're voting, maybe we clarify you're voting for approval or denial?
He said it's four.
Three of three right now.
And I vote for it.
To approve.
To, to approve, yes.
We need to know the rules.
Uh, I think, what's your approval?
Yes, sir.
Uh, they're just gonna run us the roll call.
Sorry, I don't have the, the shit rolling here. Uh, Ms. Dolly? Ms. Martha?
No.
Um, Commissioner Allen, huh?
No.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
No.
Tim Martin? Honecker?
Yes.
Do you get signed numbers?
Three.
Still time.
All right, is there any other item building agenda, any discussion items tonight for the planning commission?
We say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and just to see you all in December.
Thank you. Thank you, have a motion to adjourn?
Well, thank you.